Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
All right, welcome everyone. This is, I'll look at the date to make sure I get it right. A regular city council meeting for Tuesday, August 8, 2023. Call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. And if you would, stand for an invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day you've given us. We pray, Lord, that you'll protect us all on our return home. Help us to conduct business in the best interest of this town and its citizens. Lord, give us the wisdom to make decisions that are pleasing to you as well. Lord, we could use the rain as well while we're asking. We ask that you protect us and guide us in all ways. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
Texas.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Conrad.
Here.
Councilmember Brittany.
Present.
Councilmember Reeves.
Present.
And for our forum. Have instructions for our one speaker today. Each person who addresses the city council shall do so in an orderly manner. All wishing to speak must approach the podium, state their name, and address for record. Comments made from the public during the agenda for the public hearings, as well as the agenda items for individual consideration, will be limited to three minutes per person. Your time can't be given to another person. Your right to speak only once. At this time, let me remind everyone, silence your cell phones. Councilmembers, remind that don't text or surf the internet during the meeting. And we welcome you all here. We have one speaker.
No, I'm not.
You don't want to speak now?
No.
Oh, that's just on the agenda item. Sorry, Pam.
It's okay.
Okay, we'll get rid of everyone now. We're going to move into executive session for one item, which shouldn't take too long. In accordance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, Subchapter D, Government Code, governance Texas Code, annotated in accordance with Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to seek advice from its attorney on matter in which the duty of the attorney to govern the body under the Texas disciplinary rules and professional conduct clearly conflicts with this chapter. Enter for that, here is for you guys. Okay.
Okay, you said a few minutes.
You know me, I'm not one to pitilize others. Okay, folks, we're going to call regular meeting back into session at 6:51 PM. Our executive session requires no action on the item. And so they get back down there, I'm seeing where we are. Okay, announcements and presentation. Item number three, presentation by Viking Silver. Agent Sherman. We'll have no discussion on item three. Item four is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding opening an Entrify account at First Financial Bank. And I know they are glad they came tonight. Go get your name, Tyler.
Hi, my name is Vicki Pettit, and I'm the chief operating officer for First Financial Bank. Thank you so much for allowing us to come this evening and speak to you and introduce the Entrify accounts that we offer at First Financial. I don't know if you have the packet that I sent available. So I'm just going to give you an overview of the Entrify account that we offer, but feel free to ask any questions that you have. The Entrify network has been around for years. It's endorsed by the American Bankers Association. It basically allows municipalities, commercial customers, and individuals to have deposits at the bank in excess of FDIC insurance, but still able to get FDIC insurance. And they are able to, we can utilize an existing account that you have that is either a non-interest-bearing, an interest-bearing, or a money market account. And so we don't have to change your account number. And it is utilized by 50% of all banks in the United States. They participate in the Entrify network. The way Entrify works is we do require a minimum deposit of $1 million for access to the Entrify network. But anything over the FDIC limit of $250,000, which is the FDIC limit, sweeps out into the Entrify network. And those funds, about $250,000, are placed in banks across the United States in $250,000 increments. So you obtain FDIC insurance at those banks in the United States. You, once a customer enrolls in the Entrify network, they do get a user ID and password with Entrify. And so you can log in and you can actually see the banks, where your funds are placed throughout the United States. And at that point, you do have the ability to pick and choose. So if you do see a bank on there that you don't wish to have your funds at, you can move those funds around. For the city of Glen Rose, the Entrify account can simply be opened with a letter from the city that is signed by the mayor and Stacy, because they are listed on our resolution as having all powers. And once that happens, we can open the Entrify account. And those funds are always liquid and available to the city. And so say, for example, we place $1 million in the Entrify account. While it will show that your current balance is $250,000, your available balance would be the $1 million, even though it is swept out into the network. And so if you needed those funds, you could just simply, you know, write a check off of the account. And that night, in the end clearing, those funds would be swept back in and settled that debit. Currently, Glen Rose, the city of Glen Rose is, so that would be how your funds would be secured with First Financial, is with FDIC insurance. Today, the city of Glen Rose, your deposits are secured, but you're above FDIC limit. And so when we gained your depository bid, we had a collateral agreement signed with the city of Glen Rose. And in the collateral agreement, we specify how we secure your deposits. And we secure your deposits today with our bond portfolio. And we secure it at 110% of what your deposits are. So we secure it over and above what your deposits are. Every month, we send the city of Glen Rose a report that shows exactly what we bought, what bonds and securities we have in the city's name. And if we, if any of those treasury bills or US agencies, if they ever mature, we have to have those released by Stacy or somebody here at the city. An authorized individual has to sign releasing those, that pledge of that security. And then we will re-pledge funds in the city's name to replace those. So at no point are your deposits ever not secured at the bank. We are required to secure your deposits by utilizing treasuries, US government agencies, municipal bonds, and corporate agencies. And they are all, our policy is that they're all triple B and above. But I can tell you that 80% of all of them are double A and above. And we are heavily regulated on that. And we just recently went through an OCC exam and we passed with flying colors. And so that is something that we are heavily regulated on. It is really a pretty simple product. So it's just two different ways of securing your deposits. At this point, almost all of our public funds are secured with our bond portfolio. We just recently, we started utilizing the Entrify network. So that is an alternate method of securing your deposits if you wanted to utilize that.
The bank question I have is the P for the Entrify agreement.
Yes, sir, there is nothing.
No P. So now we've determined whether we want our security in our government or double A bonds.
Well, I do want to point out, we have an Entrify account already with Interbank. Instead, this would just be an additional, a different way to hold our money with First Financial.
TJ?
So we do have an Entrify account with another bank. And would you be able to make sure that if we go to this, that none of the funds that you put into another facility for us would be in the same facility that the other bank has funds for us in?
Yes, ma'am. What we would want to do is get a list. And you should be able to go into your portal and get a list of what banks you're invested in. And then we would exclude those from the investment opportunities.
And the monies don't travel around. You put it there and it stays there. You're not, it's not like stocks and bonds where you can move it here, move it there. You're going to put it there and leave it?
It would be there. And then if you had additional funds come in, the additional funds would be placed at your banks. But they're not constantly moving around.
Did I miss some interest rate conversation? Have we talked about that?
Yeah.
What I did through this? Okay.
The interest rate would be what was in the bid when we did our bid with the.
So it doesn't, it doesn't adjust?
Your bid is 85% of the 91-day T-bill with a cap on it.
What T-bill?
91-day.
Yeah, the 91-day T-bill, previous month average.
85% you said?
So. Now, the city of Glen Rose is presently also participating in our special money market rate. And so that's a different rate.
I noticed on your presentation here, it said interest is paid monthly?
Yes, sir, it's compounded daily payment.
It's compounded monthly, daily payment.
Yes, sir. Yeah, just like a savings account.
Anybody else?
I think we should do it.
Make a motion.
Would you really like to make a motion?
I will. I move that we move our accounts at First Financial over into the Entrify account rather than where they're at now.
All in favor? Four zero, pass. Thank you, Victor.
Can I ask you one quick question?
Yes.
So we moved, what happens to the bonds that you have? Does Stacy need to sign to release those?
We'll work that and figure out.
Yes.
The best way to put that money.
Yeah, we would not release those bonds until we had everything secured in the Entrify network. And once everything was secured, then we didn't work on that.
An individual item for consideration. Item five, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a petition for annexation of 1.32 acres on Highway 67 adjacent to the east of the 711, out of Myland County School, abstract 136, being a portion of a certain tract of land described indeed to Albie Joe Mitchell. JR recorded under instrument number 20201505 of Somerville County Public Records by BRE, Glen Rose 2.0 LLC.
So this is the petition for annexation that same property that we received last year, six months ago. So they have resubmitted it. What we're looking for tonight is the council's call a public hearing to adopt an ordinance annexing said property. So this is not, this is not doing the annexation. It's not approving anything. It's just saying that you'll consider it. It's calling a public hearing.
Public hearing to?
To consider the annexation.
To get input? Or that's what our city council meetings are?
So it's annexation, so there's specific steps we have to follow. So this is the first one, you'll call a public hearing. We start notifying the school and some other entities. Then there's just other steps that go along with that. So this is the first step in that process.
George, do you want to lead on the conversation, Reverend? Anna, would you like me to?
I will, I will. Yeah, we are, we are still in the midst of this interlocal agreement with the county. They have a, they have a meeting coming up next Monday. And I believe they're going to review that proposal, another proposal that we have given to them again. I have, I have no preconceived idea of how this is going to play out, but I'm hoping, I am hopeful that we can reach an agreement that is beneficial for both of the entities. That's, that's been go all along when we started back in December, discussing how to move forward. The idea is to move forward together. We can't have, we can't have, you know, one entity over, in an advantageous position, one over the other. And that's, that's been my goal all along. And so if this is the first step to call for the public hearing, I would have no problem calling for the public hearing. But we're going to have to reach, and we're going to have to reach an agreement between the Somerville County Assistance District. And that's just, that's just for George. That's just what it has to be. We cannot, the city cannot take on all the cost of development, all the cost of upkeep and maintenance, the things that are outlined in the provisions that we offer and continually offer, and then expect for that accrual to not return back to the city.
Okay, let's stay, I think we all know that now. Let's vote on this, does that a motion to consider this?
I'll make a motion that we have a public hearing.
Do you, you okay?
I'm not seconding that. I'm not voting for that. I don't want to move forward until we handle that.
That public hearing would be for September 12.
So Stacy, if they came out for a public hearing on the 12th, what is, would be the next steps?
The 12th, you would consider an ordinance annexing.
But do you, do we have anybody here?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Do you want to?
Wait, we just, we have a, wait, we don't have a second. No. That'd be great, sure.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Tim Donovan with Real Estate, BRE, Glen Rose 2.0. Been working on this project for better part of a year and a half, I guess. First time we submitted, we were denied annexation in January. And I think at that time, the city and the county were trying to work together on some kind of sharing of sales tax that the county currently collects outside city limits. And the, I believe it was Dee in that meeting had said, hey, we're going to put together this task force. I think it was George and I don't, I think Kelly, but obviously she's not here. And that was nine months ago. So McDonald's just hung in there with us, trying to get this thing through. And, you know, we're at the point where we wanted to resubmit it to the city for consideration again. So that's why we're here.
So we actually presented just on Monday, last Monday, so eight days ago, two options to this. Again, the conversations have continued. So they're, they have continued to move forward at different, at different paces. But we did present two different interlocal agreement options to, to the county commissioners last Monday. And they have it on their agenda on the 14th to discuss. And so there's, there's a possibility, like George said, a hopeful possibility that they may agree to those, to those points. And then it's just a matter of finalizing and drafting up the interlocal agreement. So I hesitate to move forward on anything else because if we don't do this, there's no, if we don't get the interlocal agreement, there's no reason to take any other actions from my perspective. But what I would do is encourage y'all to go to the meeting on the 14th and stress that you're waiting on them to agree to an interlocal agreement for us to be able to move forward. We had, I think, it felt like a constructive conversation with them. We, we heard the things that mattered to them and tried to put together something that, two different options that met those needs. But nothing is not an option for me. I don't know about the rest of the council, but not getting any sales tax is just not an option. And so we've continued to try to negotiate and talk through that. Again, there is a possibility on the 14th that, that they could, they could agree to one of the two options that we presented. But for me, I don't see any reason to move forward in any way until that's done. Because if we call something and then nothing happens, then the question is what happened? What are you guys doing? It starts stirring up, what are the next steps? What are we going to do when we really have to get this first thing done? It's kind of the foundation of, of the actions moving forward. But certainly, talk to your county, talk to the county commissioners on the 14th and let them know that, at least you can let them know that I said, I'm excited about the possibility of them signing it. And as soon as they sign it, we can start, we can start taking the actions that we need to take.
George? No, I just have one, one thought here. Mr. Sherman, you, y'all have been doing this for nine months or eight months. So I know it's been slow dragging. I'm kind of wondering where you would stand if we put this on hold for 30, till the next public meeting. And hopefully by then, obviously it would be after the 14th meeting. So we may have a little better stance on what, where the county stands. Well, I guess, coming out of that meeting on the 14th, we could always pull from the agenda if the meeting doesn't go the way that y'all want it to go, right? So if you get approved tonight to move forward, and then based on the outcome of that meeting, obviously, I know Dee's position, I know George's position. So if, if that meeting on the 14th doesn't go the way that y'all want it to go, we can always just pull from the agenda the next meeting.
Pleasure, have a comment.
You know, we've, I feel like we've worked really hard to try to get to yes. I've, I, when I came on the council, I, I made a public statement that I do believe that, you know, when, when, when we all benefit, when with community benefits, we all benefit. A rising tide truly lifts all boats. And I believe that, I do. And, and I'll tell you, I will make the motion to call the public hearing for September 12th as a goodwill effort to, to the other entities that we want to move forward. It's an effort to move forward. We want to move forward. I'll do anything I can to move forward. But I can't do it at the detriment of the city of Glen Rose. So I'll call the, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Secondary motion.
No, I'm going to move for the motion. I'm going to move for the motion because hers died. I'm going to move for the motion to call for the, for the hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Uh huh.
Four zero, pass.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, number six item, discussion items.
I hope the public shows up to that meeting.
Yeah, they need to. Number six, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the adoption of the city of Glen Rose's maximum proposed tax rate for 2023. Mr. Wayne?
Well, for the truth in taxation that form that they created, it was to make things simple. And so it ended up, the calculation is 19 pages long, so. And in fact, when I met with Wes Rolland, they had to have their logger computer because of some of the vagueness in the, in the new rulings and stuff. So, but you have computation, 19-page computation. It really flipped to the next to the last page because that's where the meat of the result is.
Okay.
The next to last page is?
Yeah, the next to last page.
Can you get that? 34?
16. That's what mine says.
Oh, 16.
Well, then that would be 35, 35 in the pack.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right, it's all right.
So what it comes down to is it computes three different rates that are possible. Okay? Given our growth in the city and all the property tax, we are limited to amount of growth in property tax. Okay? And so they come down, the first rate that you see computed is the no new revenue, revenue tax rate. That says, we're going to lower our tax rate to the level offsetting the growth of the property tax. And that rate is .26761460. The next one is the voter approval tax rate, which is the tax rate that gives us 3.5% growth. And, and with anything, when you have new people coming in, things growing, you need some growth. And a legislator, the legislature understood that and said, okay, we'll do 3.5. Okay. Now, 3.5, the rate is .27881825. Now, some cities have gone forth to the legislature and they complained, we can't get by on 3.5%, you know, inflation's more than that. So they came back with a de minimis rate, which adds 500,000 to the voter approval tax rate. And that rate is .44880090. That's the third one. So those are the three rates. And we had recommended as a staff that we go with the voter approval tax rate, the 3.5% growth. And we also, just to make sure that we don't go over that rate, because that rate, over that rate would require an election. Okay? That people, the voters would have to say, yeah, we want to do that. So we actually are recommending .2788 and stop. Okay? So for sure, we're not asking for the ultimate rate. We're asking for something a little less.
Any questions?
Well, I know this is not approving the tax rate. This is y'all saying that y'all will not set the tax rate any higher than X amount. So y'all can change this at any point in time to anything lower. Y'all just can't go higher. So this is not tying y'all into anything. This pretty much gives us a better basis to build our budget on.
Avery?
Yeah. I think that's a great idea to cut off the end.
Deb?
Really quick, Panzerator 205 Southwest. What is the current tax rate now for First Financial?
The current tax rate?
306.
.30629.
8. 290.
28, 29.
290.
29.
Is what the current?
.30629.
It's at the top of page 35.
So this is, this is a change of .0274.
So even though it's going to be, even though it's raising more revenue, the tax rate is actually lower than what their consumer, the residents are paying now. That's what I wanted to get across.
Yeah. If, if we had not lowered the rate and just applied the same rate, it'd have been a 16.5% increase instead of 3.
Yeah, so that's why I wanted to just say that out loud.
On a, on a tax.
I have to explain that, have to explain that. Our tax base grew 16.5%. And so if we'd have just applied the same rate, the actual revenue didn't come in at 16.
On a tax base of almost $300 million. 299 and some change. Councilmembers, anybody have a comment?
I move to accept the proposed tax rate of 0.2788. I'll second it.
Second, all in favor? Four zero, pass. Thank you, Wayne.
Yes, Ray.
Number seven, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a special alcohol usage permit application for the good old days, moonshine festival. Kelly? Please state your name and address, please.
Kelly Harris, 202nd Street, Glen Rose, Texas. I actually had this for the last council session, but since Stacy's office was. I actually had this for the last council session, but since Stacy's office was undone and moved around, she didn't get it on the agenda. So we're running a little bit late on this, but this is just for our alcohol permit, special usage for us to have our speakeasies and stuff throughout the Moonshine Festival. This is our VIP mug that you get when you buy your VIP ticket. In the packet, I've got maps for you of where all it's going to be, what all we have going. I gave you a list of the events that will be going on during that time as well. So, any questions?
Are people allowed to bring their own coolers or is it they have to purchase here in order to walk and drink?
We've not had anybody ask us that.
Please don't be a big white.
Huh?
Please don't be a big white.
No, I mean, because this is, we're getting alcohol permits so that they can go and, and get their VIP drinks through their VIP pass or to go. Our point is to make them go inside to cool off a little bit, have your VIP drink or whatever. Then you can come back out and shop or go watch the withdrawal people or the Texas Rangers, whatever, and then go back in another place and, you know.
Perfect. Okay, that, that's why I just wanted to make sure they weren't getting to bring their own.
Yeah, no, we, at the street dance, we're gonna be providing bottled water, you know, so that people can stay hydrated. And the EMT station will be right here on the backside of the courthouse. And they're gonna be bringing bottled water up there and coolers so that people can stay hydrated and stuff while they're out there.
Kelly, just a thought. Sorry, I don't need to talk. If they're carrying that glass around with a drink?
This is their.
They can leave one bar and walk around the square with that?
Yes, that's what this permit's for. This is their, this is their VIP pass.
That's the point.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're gonna have to have this.
They put that all the way with whiskey?
I hope so.
No, it's moonshine.
Moonshine, yeah.
It's backtucked in at our place.
Will, will there be armbands or anything or just strictly the mugs? So if it's just the mugs?
When you buy a VIP mask, it's somebody else. When you buy a VIP pass, you get this. You also get a T-shirt that's just for the VIP people. And there are several other things in with that. But this is typically the only, you can't buy these. You have to have the VIP pass. But, I mean, we can always make wristbands too.
Yeah, because I, I don't want a 21-year-old to go up there, get the VIP pass, and then pass his mug to his 20-year-old buddy.
Well, they'll be, everybody, the bars are responsible for carding. They're all being.
Because they don't have their licenses. They don't have their license when they serve.
They can't do that.
And it's illegal.
But you do have a good point in that I could buy it and then I go, I got my drink now, you go get your drink now, you go get your drinks. Okay, I'll, I'll buy a green whatever, then that.
No, only that person is.
Well, and these particular drinks with the VIP pass, you can only get those drinks with the VIP pass.
Right.
So like, not just anybody could walk in and buy the bathtub gym from the Snyder's Tavern Speakeasies.
But, but like what, what Dee was just saying is, I can, I can buy a VIP pass and go get my drinks.
Yeah.
And then give Dee the mug and say, oh, yeah, I've had mine, go ahead, Dee.
Oh, they still pay.
You can see for a drink. They're not even real.
Yeah, yes, now the, the drinks are free. They're at a discount and right.
There's a discount.
Oh, I thought they were free.
No, no, no.
You can taste and you can go and just get a taste.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that.
We're like anywhere 25, 50% off, they can get the drink with this pass. They get the whole drink, you know, just a little taste.
Kelly, I got three questions for you. Number one, I saw that you, you have EMS 10 set up for the areas. What hours are they gonna be on site for any medical issues? Has that already been established?
Yes, we've already met with the fire department, sheriff's department.
Is it just, yeah?
Hours of operation, maybe about an hour after. Friday night, the vendors will be set up from four to nine. There's a street dance from eight to 10. So the EMS probably is gonna be out there from about four to 10, just to make sure that, you know, somebody's been out all day, that there'll be somebody there to kind of, you know, watch it. Saturday, it's 10 to 10, and then Sunday's a wonderful one.
Okay. And then what arrangements have we made with law enforcement?
I've already made arrangements with them.
Is it SO, PD, or the hall?
It's both. It's a combination of both. And as with the Pluxie Festival, some people, if they don't want to volunteer for it, then we're getting them from out of Hood County, Johnson County.
Off duty.
Hamilton County, yep.
And then the last question I have is, what do, what do the proceeds go to?
Well, basically, we're just hoping to break even right now. I mean, it's, it's basically celebrating our history, so I'm not really expecting any proceeds right at this time. It's our first year out. We do have YOLO Television coming out and doing a spread on it. We also have Hank FM will be out here all day Saturday. Of course, Barry Corbin will be here Friday night, so there's a lot of people coming in for that. So this is our first year kickoff to hopefully let people know what it's like. After that, then we will see. But right now, whatever money we're collecting from vendors, from T-shirts, from whatever, is going back in to pay for Barry Corbin.
Sure.
To get these mugs and, and all that stuff, so, yeah.
So if there is a profit, is it just going to do next year's plans or is it going to?
Yeah, because it'd be best to start with a little bit of something, you know, in the coffers.
Thank you.
And then I gave each of you the new magazines, those are in now. So just wanted to make sure y'all knew they were here, that I really have been working on them, they are here. And I'm waiting for approval from the Texas Highway Department. They have to approve it before it go to the travel information centers, which it won't be a problem, but I just have to get the official approval.
Very nicely done, Kelly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions regarding the special use?
I move to grant the special use permit.
I'll say it.
Thank you.
All in favor? Four zero, passes. We're looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to it.
On the, if anybody wants to volunteer, we have a website, glenrosemoonshine.com. You can sign up for time slots on there at the various different places that we have going on all over the place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight, discussion consideration of possible action regarding the approval of a contract and related expenditures to repay the original city of Glen Rose's water tower.
So I guess basically, there was, there was money budgeted for, for this project, and we haven't pursued a contractor to, to do that. That was kind of a project that Michael was, was lead man on. I didn't even realize that money was in the budget because it wasn't in the water budget. It was in, I guess, the district, the lawn department or something. I don't. So it's, and it's pretty much too late to paint it now because it's too hot. But if y'all wanna, if you want to pursue it, we can, we can start the process, sign the contract.
And, and that would put it in this year's budget because when the August come, they'll save a lot of penalty, and we've already incurred the expense, we just haven't spent the money yet.
What did we budget, 95?
Ninety.
Ninety?
I actually have a question for Ms. Carver. I'll back and ask, oh, just making sure. So when this first came to us, one of the reasons that we held was because we were investigating, changing the water tower into being a, having a historical designation. Oh, okay, never mind.
Why are you gonna paint it and then designate it?
That's not right, yes.
Sorry, that's just my, my, why are you gonna paint it and then designate it? Because you're gonna have to get approval to paint it and designate it.
So I don't know if we want to move for, so, so my question was coming from, at that time, one of the reasons we chose not to move forward was because we were advised by our administrator at the time that it was, that we would receive approximately $7,500, which, I mean, all money is good money in my book. But, but I subsequently learned that that number wasn't, was just pulled out of thin air, that that wasn't a number really done with investigation. It was, hey, here's how much they give, here's how many people could apply for it, and so here's how much we could get. But in actuality, because there aren't a whole lot of these guys, we may be able to get more. If everybody doesn't apply, we could get more. And so Mike, I don't know if we, we, can we approve moving forward with this, but hold on moving forward with it until we get more information on that?
Well, we gotta wait till the end of summer anyway.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, Mary.
She asked if you could ask a good question. I would, if we could put items seven and eight together, we can move forward with this, and you can make a decision on whether you want to paint it or not.
I don't think we can adjust the agenda at this point, but we can move forward with seven. Right, Stacy?
Y'all can go ahead and talk about designating it and then come back to eight.
Can we put seven and eight together, so to speak?
We can discuss it, yeah, together.
Might, might need a little bit.
Yeah.
Will you?
Was it not a feasibility study to what kind of shape this water tower's in and whatnot? I thought that was done or supposed to be done, I didn't know.
Yeah, she got up on there and checked, yeah.
She, yeah, she, the, the sales rep for the company that does the repair work and painting, she climbed up there and checked it out, said everything looks great, and you could, you could justify painting it. I talked to our engineer, and he said it's not feasible to, to put the tank into service. The way the system was designed, if we, if we put that into service, with the way our pressure planes are situated, it will constantly overflow. And so it's not feasible to try and use it as part of our system.
It's a landmark item, not a functional item, yeah.
I just, I'm concerned with how safe it is. We do all this, and then 10 years, we're able to take it down.
I think given the engineer and the, the vendor, they said it was sound. They should go up there and take a look at it.
I'll call you up there.
Good answer.
Jim, I have four questions for you sitting here on my paper here. Number one, I noticed that it said there was some rust issues, and of course, this SP, SSPC 12 and SP 213 mean nothing to me because I don't know what that is.
Right.
Are they sandblasting to remove the rust before they start moving the coating? What, what is the plan as far as making sure that it's not a recurring issue or a very minimal issue?
Yeah, they'll, they'll use hand tools basically to, to any spot where there's surface rust. It's just, it's not structural damage, just surface where the paint's, I guess, chipped off or peeled. They'll, they'll use a grinder and a wire brush to clean that up, or pressure washing can remove some of the stains.
Okay. And then I didn't see anything in the, the contract that was in there that talked anything about any type of a warranty. Were there, are they guaranteeing they're working off for some amount of years? Are they?
They're, they're saying that they would do the two-year warranty because whoever painted it last time, they didn't blast it in the type of paint they used over the existing silver. They said that wasn't a good idea. That paint's been on there since, what, 2004?
Four, oh, yeah. Then the, the last question I got for you is, I noticed in the contract it said electrical antennas, all that, they're not gonna touch that's on the owner? Is there a plan for that or is that gonna be an extra charge to do it or?
Well, that can be part of y'all's negotiation next door because I think that, I think that stuff belongs to the county. And I don't know if they want to take it down or if we want to.
You're reading my mind, so my understanding is nobody, everybody's saying not it. So if the county says not it, and the fire department says if everybody says not it, then can we just take it down and say, y'all said not it? And if it messes something up?
No, I don't think there's.
Because we don't think it's functional.
They're taking down the antennas.
The three UHF antennas.
Yeah, we don't think they're, they're in function. Right, we don't think they.
They're not in function.
And nobody says that they're theirs. And since they don't work, nobody's gonna want to claim them because then we're gonna ask them to take it down. So if we ask everybody and everybody says not it, then I guess we just take it down and they better hope they didn't need them for something.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's gonna be an issue.
Does that fall on public services?
And Mr. Green.
Yeah. That's why it's still up there.
And one other point, the reason we're not sandblasting, that's another $100,000. If they were to sandblast the whole thing, another $100 on top of the nine, so.
It has to be contained.
Sure.
So my house doesn't get covered?
Those letters and numbers mean that they're.
Yeah. Jim, you were talking about, I think it, I'm sure it was this we were talking about, you're talking about they're gonna put some ground cover to collect all of the debris that's coming off of it. Was that, if they were gonna sandblast it?
If they were, yeah, if they were to sandblast it, they would have to do that.
Okay, so they're just gonna go and. I'm sure that, yeah.
And sand it down and, and repaint it.
Like any other contractor, they're responsible to clean up what they miss it, yeah.
Does this include the buildings or the, I don't know what the, the caged in small tower next to, within the fenced in areas, but does, does this have anything to include with those building or that?
Just a tower.
Thank you.
I believe that's, that's the old siren of the fire department, I believe.
Yeah, it's the siren for the fire department.
Does it still work?
Probably. Put a, put a fresh battery in it, it'll go off. What time are we on?
We're gonna.
Your neighbors will be upset.
Stacy said we could talk about seven, and then we could talk about eight, and then we can go back to vote on seven.
Eight and nine, we can talk about nine.
And conjunction and nine. So this is eight, and then nine is the historic.
Okay, let's move to nine. Y'all ready for that?
Yes, sir.
Sure? Discussion consideration and possible action on designating the city's original water tower as a historic landmark. Ms. Carver?
Anne Carver, I am the chairperson for the Glen Rose Historic Preservation Commission. Last year, we discussed making the water tower historic landmark. I think that when I told the previous city administrator that, I read him verbatim what falls into the landmark being done. I read him that all research needed, plans, photos, et cetera, must be completed by the applicant, which means the city of Glen Rose. The historic preservation officer or a preservation commission will not conduct any research or complete any paperwork on behalf of the applicant. It fell on him. So he didn't want to do it. But the person who filled out this paperwork for you is standing before you this evening. The city administrator did not, I asked him for additional information and he didn't provide it. So it couldn't even really be completed to be reviewed. But I am the person who filled it out. I am the person who did the research for it. I did it through, I know that y'all are all familiar with the book that was published about the architecture, and when you open up the first dedication page of it, the water tower is there. And the book is dedicated to Karen Gl Richardson, who, if you've been a longtime resident here, you know that she fought for preservation here in this community, she's still here. And it was, this was with her hard work that this book was done, with Dr. Baker and all. And then there is exactly a two-page spread about our beautiful water tower. So from a landmark point of view, we need to make it a landmark. It's in our literature, it's here, it's, it's one of the few erector water towers that are still standing today. I actually, part of the. Is that you have to go and make a, a side visit. The person who sits on preservation actually has to go out there and look at it. I was unable to climb it today.
Wearing the wrong shoes.
Yeah. No, actually, the fence was locked and there was a car parked in front of the fence, and I couldn't get to it. and I couldn't get to it. Um, because I would have climbed it. I climbed feet meals, so it's not a, I'm not saying I'm going to go climb it for you, but I would have looked at it. Um, they are correct. It needs to be made a landmark and it is from the ground level, structurally sound. There are a few things that need to be done. Um, I believe that as Councilwoman D spoke, because she did ask me, um, there was some misrepresentation. We are a certified local government for historic preservation through the Texas Historical Commission. That meaning that there are special funds for CLGs, just like anywhere else. Like Texas and Mexico Power right now has $145,000 that they give in grants. Anybody can apply that is a nonprofit within their service area and that $145,000 is like for this service area. They break it down. Doesn't mean that if 50 people apply, because their grants are between $2,000 and $10,000, that they're going to go, oh, well, we'll give you two, we'll give you two, we'll give you. They don't. They're between $2,000 and $10,000 and that's the way it is. The same way it works with CLG grants. Last year they had $150,000. There are 75 cities that are CLG in the state of Texas. And those cities can all apply for the grant, whether they do or they don't. Then they take that grant and they look at it and they say, oh, you're going to do your water tower, you're going to do your sidewalks, you're going to do this, that and the other within your district. And it takes X amount of dollars, we have this amount of dollars. We're going to give you this much of it and divide it all up. So just because they say there's, say there's 20 cities and they're going to give $100,000 and they divide it by those 20 cities, that doesn't mean we're only going to get $1.98. We could possibly get more than that. So that's part of it. There are other grants through the commission that can help pay for it. If, um, it was part of our, um, historic resource source survey that we did in 2010, was included in that. So there is no reason why we shouldn't make it a landmark. The fact that you may have come to the understanding that if you make it a historic landmark, you can't paint it, you can't do anything with it. What the, making it a landmark is that you cannot willfully let it deteriorate. You must maintain it in some fashion, which you're already going to do because you're going to paint it. So if you're going to spend $90,000 on it, let's make it a landmark. Let's ensure that you spent that $90,000 of taxpayers' money well. It doesn't stop you from doing anything. You fill out a certificate of appropriateness, you write on there, you're going to paint the city logo on it. You send it over to preservation, preservation meets, it's a consent agenda item and it is done. Stacy is very familiar with how consent agenda items work with historic preservation. It less than, less than one meet, meeting to have it done. She filled it out and that was it. So, and in the four years that I've sat on that commission, we have denied two certificates of appropriateness and told them how they needed to go back and change them and fix them. And both of those were approved once they filled out the paperwork correctly. So if you would like to give, even though it says that person won't do it, if you would like to give direction to the historic preservation chairperson to complete this application, you still have to meet all of the requirements for making it a landmark. The chairperson will be glad to finish completing it and, um, present it to the historical, um, preservation commission to move forward at that point.
Members, you'll have to complete that.
What are the rest of the requirements we would need to?
You have to, well, you have to give me the information to finish filling it out. Um, I did pull a CAD today on it, but I'm not sure I got the right CAD location because it doesn't have an address on the CAD for the water tower and all. Um, so I need to be sure I got that because it'll finish most of the information. You have to meet, um, two of the following, you have three categories, historic, geographic and architectural. And you have to meet two of those criterias to then move forward with it actually getting it. So, um, in the historic, I filled it all out and it does say, you have to, to qualify as a landmark, a property must meet at least one criterion and at least two of the three categories, historic, architectural and geographic. So you just have to.
So we've got historic and, and architectural?
Yeah. All right, does it meet those two?
I don't know. I can't tell you that. I have to do the paperwork. It has to go there. But what I can tell you is that if you don't do the paperwork, it does not meet those categories.
So I would make a motion that we give her the permission to please move forward with this. Yeah, I second that.
Oh, thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
So what does this, how does this obligate the city to continual maintain it? Is there, is there extra steps beyond just our normal everyday maintenance of the, of the historic designation?
You cannot willfully allow it to deteriorate. That means that you cannot go down there and drive a bulldozer through it. You cannot go and say that you paint the sign up there on it and we're never going to send Jim out there to make sure that the legs aren't taking a hit from the wind or the tree hasn't blown into it, which is something we're going to do anyway. You can't willfully just not maintain it. You're going to maintain it anyway because you're maintaining it as it is.
And our community has clearly expressed an interest in preserving the, the things that are special and unique to us. So I don't, I mean, this, I don't want us to get to where we were with this guy. Where all of a sudden we're scrambling to try to protect it.
I did that building, they came to me for that building, the owners did, on a Monday afternoon. It takes 120 days minimum to do this, but I did that building in five days. Called special meeting, just so that we could have it made historic before Texas thought got there. So it can be done quicker and faster, um, if the information is here. But they came to me, they asked me to help them and assist with it. City administrator asked me, the mayor called and asked me what we could do and all. We expedited it and called a special meeting for that building, so that was done. The water tower, we can have it done because we have the information. We don't really have to go hunt and pack for it. We have the pictures, we have the information, we can find it. Um, it can be done. It will not, um, I will tell you, it will not make, um, next Tuesday, in the next Tuesday, third Tuesday in the correct, um.
Yes.
Yeah, in next Tuesday, third Tuesday. I can tell you it will not make the agenda next Tuesday, but it will make the agenda in September.
Okay, let's move back to it.
I got one more question. Please. You rattled out a few various grants and I know you can speculate on dollar figures that the city might receive. Um, but obviously I'm going back to the $90,000 of the paint. So I'm trying to figure out, is this a worthwhile thing to, for grant purposes to make it, uh, you know, are we looking to get in $20,000 possibly? I, I know, again, I know you can't.
Certified, we are a certified local government.
Right.
Okay, that, that was standing. Has nothing to do with whether the water tower or not is. Those grants are accepted till the end of March, from January 1st to March 31st of every year. And, um, you fill it out, you send it in, you ask for your grant. There are others at the commission that you can get. Municipalities are limited on some grants through the historical commission because most of those go to nonprofits for historic buildings or private owners of historic buildings. Um, but yes, there are grants out there. You just need to know where they are. And there are, there are some nonprofits that give to municipalities for historic preservation.
So then would our best, and I'm assuming we couldn't retroactive. So if we already, like, if we did everything in the next few months, then we wouldn't be able to get a grant for it because it's already done. So we would need to wait to take action until we get.
Well, that's on the, that's whether you choose to, and again, back to, um, Councilman Freeze, when he made the last time we were here, not a couple of weeks ago, when you said something about the grant money only being like $7,500. Um, there's no guarantee you're going to get it. So if you don't do something because it's in the budget, we're going to end up like we did before. The budget, it got put over here on the shelf and it didn't get done and we're back to having to try to redo it again.
Yeah, that was going to be my point is can we vote on the earlier one, but vote to execute it April 1st? And by April 1st, we'll know if we have a grant or not. Either way, we're going to.
Well, you won't know if you have a grant by April 1st.
When would we know?
They close them on the 31st of March and it takes, you know, four to six. So you're back into the June and getting into the hot season of painting. Um, you know, but should, on this land, on this particular situation or anything else that is municipality, that is historic, that you want to do for the CLG grant, you can still get that money to do something in the future with it, even though we've done this. You can't apply for painting the water tower when you've already done it. But you can apply to, you cannot fix the sidewalks with it because we don't own them, but there might be something you can apply for CLG grant money that could go toward assisting with some of that. So there are other grants to offset some of that and, and there's no guarantee of what we'll get and what we won't get and, and all. So the question is, do you really want me to finish filling this out? And you really want to make it a historical landmark and make it preserved in that sense? And Councilman Freeze, honestly, it's not going to change your maintenance plan other than you cannot willfully let it deteriorate. Can't run over it, you can't, if an act of God comes along and does something to it, but yet it, 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 it injures, you know, I, I think of every building as a living person. So every historic site is that, so y'all, I'm sorry, it lives and breathes. But if something damages the erector legs to it, but we're still able to have the tower portion of it, we can fix that. We can, if you have to drop the tower down by, you know, the, the leg, it's still staying. I know, I see that. It's still not 95 feet in the air, but.
And, and that, that's, that's really kind of my rub with making it a designated landmark, a designated historic landmark. Because if there were something that happened to it and then we would be in a position where we would, we would, we would obligate future councils to spend probably significant amount of money to rehab and, and protect or resurrect what could easily be just taken down. I wouldn't want to see it taken down. It would, it would break my heart if we lost our water tower. I love it. I love coming down there and seeing it as we top the hill. But if, from a business decision standpoint, I wouldn't spend $150,000 to rehab something that we don't use, that we do not use, we don't have in our system, we don't use it at all, when we could, we could topple it for 70. And that's just numbers.
Yeah, I'll tell you, you hear me say all the time, I do not like to obligate future councils to things. I have no problem obligating them to that. Like, there, there are a few things that we, or maybe not even future councils. Like, we know that we're in a pickle now because there were thi, yes. Because there were things that could have been done with previous councils that weren't done and because they weren't done then, they can't be done now. And so that's one of the things that I'm thinking about from this is they may, it wouldn't surprise me one bit if the state comes out in two years and goes, you're not allowed to do, have water towers anymore. Unless it's a landmark. So it's just, if, there are very, very few things that I want to hold future councils accountable to do, but protecting those things that are really special and unique to us is, is, is one of them that I have no heartburn holding them to do.
Historic small town charm, right there.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So to his point, I have a question. So you currently own the water tower or it's your possession essentially right now, right? You own it. So, I mean, I know you're not willingly going to go tear it down, but if it does come to it, would you take, like, are you going to take it down? Like, say something does happen and you take it down, are you willing to take it down and, and way hurt everybody's feelings or are you willing to protect it? And then if it happens to come down, like, you take care of it while you're taking it down? If that makes sense? I don't know, that's my opinion. I, I think it should be a protected landmark because it is important to me as in the community. Like you said, George, it's important to you. It should be protected. Yeah, I know it's going to maybe cost you money and then, but you don't know. I mean, you never know what's going to happen.
Well.
You guys, what'd you say?
All I'm going to tell you is that I was there today and it was, there is no reason why, if we're going to spend $90,000, let's just make it a landmark and maybe benefit in the future from it being a landmark and being able to do something with it.
There you go.
I'll stand by my motion.
Can I have one last, can I have one last, just one last question?
Yes, ma'am.
When, when something is damaged beyond repair or, or at the edge of beyond repair, how is that decision made? Where, where is that decision? Where does that decision lie? Does it lie with the historic preservation district? Does it lie with the city council? Does it lie with Texas Historic Commission?
It actually lies within, um, the commission, the historic commission. And all the city council has to do is advise us that it is beyond repair and it comes down. I mean, that's, it's very clear in the ordinance that we're, we're not going to, that they're not going to, whether I'm sitting on that or not, they're not going to tell you, you have to repair it. It's very clear. You just got off the correct paperwork and it comes down.
When it comes to a safety issue, beyond repair, those items, you're not going to be invisible.
You can't, you can't, if you had, and Councilman Freeze, this, if, this sounds rather blatant and ugly, but anybody who cannot see that it is a safety issue at that point in time and it needs to come down and that the, the betterment of the community is not better served by coming down because of the harmful, harmful things that could happen, then I would ask for you to have that person removed from your historical commission. Because they ain't got no lick of sense.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Will you repeat it, please?
I make the motion that we designate the water tower as a historic landmark. Do I need to say it differently again?
Make the application.
Make the application. Okay, make the application to.
Your original motion was to pursue the, proceed with pursuing the designation. Yes, thank you. That's, that's the one motion I want to make to proceed with letting Anne do the paperwork to get this designated if possible. Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Four zero, passes. Thank you, Anne, for your help.
Can we go back to spending the money?
Yeah.
Allocating the money?
Yeah, because you never finished that one.
Make a motion to, to enter into a contract with Maguire for painting and rehabbing the water tower.
Have a second, all in favor? Four zero, was that a hand, Richard?
Yes.
I did have one question though, probably more for Stacy. Is that still in this year's current budget?
Item number 10, let's move ahead. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding the ordinance amending the city of Glen Rose Code of Ordinances, Chapter 3.07, flood damage prevention. First thing that greeted me on the desk. Will you announce your name? Oh, yeah. Larry Allen, oh, you. Okay. Larry Allen, I'm the building official here in Glen Rose. The first thing that I met on my desk was, um, certified letters from FEMA stating that we were not in compliance with the upcoming new floodplain maps. So in order to do that, we had to amend our ordinance. There were three simple amendments. One was to the adoption, had to do with the language that adopted our datum for using it. We had to upgrade that. We were in like 1929, it needed to be in 1988. So we adopted that new language and then two of our definitions had to be altered to, uh, once again, upgrade that to that. And now we, if we finish this, we'll be in compliance, ship it off to FEMA and we maintain our flood. our flood insurance program. Okay, so you feel confident in the new ordinance that it covers what they require? Exactly. I coordinated with the representative for FEMA for Texas. So he and I coordinated, that's who I'll be sending it back to, and then he'll, he'll give us back our approval. Right. Any questions or comments?
Is there any reason for our lawyer to look at it, or since it went through that representative, it's had the right eyes on it?
Well, we've had discussions. I think it's, FEMA's pretty all encompassing.
Okay, yeah.
Right, it was minor changes, but we were pretty comprehensive as a plus. We almost read verbatim for their suggested ordinance. If you feel more comfortable, that's certainly good, but time is of the essence, understood?
In theory, you should have reviewed it.
Right, we have till September the 17th to have it finalized.
Oh, that's, okay, perfect. Yep, that's right.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Stacy?
He, he got it with the agenda packet, so in theory, he should have already reviewed it.
I move to update the amended City of Glen Rose Code of Ordinances, Chapter 3.07, flood damage prevention.
All in favor? Four zero. Is that A, Stacy?
Yes.
I don't know. Sorry. Sorry, Miss King.
Ordinance number 2023, dot 08, dot 08, dot A. Stacy? Number 11, discussion of next steps regarding the City of Glen Rose Hotel Occupancy Tax That's a little... Next steps. Yeah, next steps. It's more where we're going to go, what we're going to do with those tax.
If I could just have a, she called me, please. I met with Kelly and she went over her budget meeting. And the plans I have for the funds right now are about 200, of the 320,000 spent, about 250,000 of salary benefits, those kind of things related to, you know, to the staff except which we do not have, okay? Insurance, all the, all those things. So I simply, at this point, have left the revenue there. I took the amount that was salary benefits and ongoing office expenditures and things like that, moved it into one line, okay? So we'll have an amount we know we need to reallocate, okay? And all the advertising, she said she would break the advertising into two components so that they would have their 20% and we'd have our 80% of bills to pay, okay? She's working with the different vendors on those. So I left those types of counts there, okay? I had a request from a council member that we have an allocation of funds to modify the CBB building, as we would like to have. I took that $50,000 and set it aside as well, okay? Now, if we go in and actually modify, we can only use the $50,000 for modifying the lower floor where you actually have the visitor's center, okay? If in fact we want to modify the building upstairs and have it as offices perhaps, then we're gonna use general fund. Okay? So I've got it in two places right now for, one thing that I believe to be true is that we're gonna have to make, we're gonna have to get an elevator, okay? Especially if we get, you know, offices upstairs, so our residents are disabled, can go, you can, they can't make it up those stairs.
Those stairs are super steep both directions, front and back. Like, you go, you go straight up, both ways.
You go straight up. I went over there and toured the building, it's amazing how, how difficult it is to climb those stairs. And so we're gonna have to look at that, you know, and, and to your point, you'd said it was, we have to make it.
Right, right. We have to comply with ADA and tax.
ADA, yeah. So... Even if we have an alternative location, so if somebody has a need for an ADA need, we couldn't just meet them here?
Or downstairs.
Or downstairs?
Yeah, there, there is exceptions to the rules. On those examples, you would have to have the exact same service on both floors.
I don't, I don't think that's true.
But that's fine because...
No, you just have to have it on the lower floor, what it was up here, so, and that includes employment.
But that, that's fine because we were just looking at it being office space, so this is office space too. So if, if somebody needs to go to an office, we could meet here if we needed to meet here.
The historic preservation, we should, yeah, she's gotta comment on that.
I've seen the, the changes in the building, they're restricted.
I've been fine.
Go ahead, Anne, just start.
The building is a historic building, and therefore, there are a lot of ADA rules that don't apply because it is a historic building and you are not changing it. But once you start changing, you fall into different categories. So I would suggest highly, unless you would like to follow every one of them to the letter to the T, I suggest highly that you leave the front stairs and the rear stairs as stairs.
Oh, yes, 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 yeah.
But be very careful when you start changing other aspects of the interior, then you do have to follow ADA lines.
So keep in mind, this was my request, and I want it to be painted to match this room. I want the floors to be updated to match this rooms, to match this building so that they, they feel like connected places, and then put cubicles and a desk in. So we're not talking knocking walls down, we're not talking adding bathrooms and kitchens and sinks, we're talking tile, paint, tables.
You're talking routine maintenance inside a historic building.
Yep.
That is...
Okay, other than that, that would help. Because, you know, it is, it is quite...
Yes, they can't take the floors.
Fine, okay.
Well, thank you, Anne.
You can't take the floors, so...
No. Now, those desks that are there, I was told, is already belongs to the city.
We're gonna do a full audit on all the items.
So it might just be a matter of floor and tile, and floor and wall and organizing.
Forty seconds.
Your question, your agenda is very vague, just to see...
It is.
The conversation that you need to be having is what are you gonna be doing to replace?
That's, yeah.
How are you positioning it? What are your job posting for? That's, the budget stuff is great, wonderful, fabulous, you obviously need that, but you've got an awful lot of hoteliers who are desperately seeking guidance of what your plan is and the rumor that is going around, whether it's real or not, is that conversations have been engaged with Kyle Spees for her to take over and mine...
Let me just tell you what's happening. Nothing has happened.
All I'm saying is, I think...
Well, let me just tell you what's happened. Today, we decided to form a roundtable with all of the BMBs, the hoteliers, offer two days, whichever we get the most of the attendance to, we're going to have a roundtable. This is your tax, this is your plan, this is your chance to tell us where we go, what we do, what you need.
Perfect, that's what you need to say.
We're gonna do it post haste, we're going to do it very quickly. We're gonna have two members there to handle it.
Okay.
And we're gonna move on. And we have not posted a job because we may not have a job. We haven't offered a job. I have had conversations with the Chamber of Commerce regarding things like July 4th, Christmas parades, Lions Club, I wanna visit with them, and do some things and spread it out as a volunteer function rather than a cost, and spend those dollars in a more appropriate area. So, nothing's been done, nothing's been decided outside of a roundtable with all of you.
Perfect. That's all we need to know.
That's what I had listed as my question was, or as my comment was, I would like to be a part of that roundtable. Me? I would like to be a part of that roundtable, and I'd like to see the start, stop, continue that comes from, from the county on what they're gonna start doing, what they're gonna stop doing, what they're gonna continue.
That's tomorrow.
Yeah.
And we'll discuss who else is on that roundtable session with you, who feels like they have the time and no interest, don't have to do that today.
Okay.
Joe, you have interest.
Yeah.
Joe, I'm gonna tell you, you should be you, as the mayor.
Okay, I have interest.
I not have time, but you have interest.
Full-time job. Okay, I, I do believe we have a good, a good opportunity to move forward and take control of some things that should be within the city, and I look forward to it. It's not a problem, it's an opportunity. So, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. There are all items considered routine by the city council, be in act of, by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed or considered separately. Do we have either item? All three? Second. All in favor? Pass. The agenda is passed. Jim, would you like to give your report? You have anything else?
Don't have anything to ask.
I do have a question for you. This is pertinent to you. You got Richard's text regarding the generators?
Yes, sir.
I'm liking to consider maybe looking at, can we lend those for a two night, or is it too chancy that we might need a one location?
And what would be the appropriate size? Yeah, I'm not an electrician, so we would, we would have to find a qualified individual that helps us figure out which one would be the best option.
You say a risky?
I mean, I see on the news all the time where, where they're talking about how stressed out our grid is or whatever, but I mean, we haven't used them for that yet.
Well, I can promise you this, if, if that happens, if it happens, we'll unplug and take it.
Sure.
We'll consider it, let's, we'll talk about an electrician.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else you wanna cover? Water valve on Hereford's all done?
All done.
I saw y'all working out there.
Pretty neat process. I like the new curb today, it's totally done, but you like it.
I'm trying to go through, I know I had a question on something on yours. The, there's another company that's doing it, we've got those, the barricades and stuff around a huge hole on Hereford. Do you know how long that's gonna stay? I haven't been on it today.
They're gone, it's covered.
Okay, I wasn't on it today, so...
It's done.
Okay, good.
I went though once. That's the truth. All right, thank you, Jim. Jesse, you got anything?
Sir.
How's Buck doing?
He's doing good, I talked to him before the meeting, just waiting on some medical stuff, I don't know how much we can share.
Well, we'll all offer our prayers to his dad. Let him know that.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for...
Jesse, for, for last month, I just had one question. I noticed that there were six days that we did not have coverage and obviously not, well, discussing the illnesses or things, but we're covering behind with overtime when appropriate and to make sure that we have seven-day-a-week coverage in the city or...
That would probably be a better question to achieve, I can only work on schedule.
There are... So you can pass back that those questions.
Yeah, I'll ask. I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Work 80 hours a week.
80 hours a week?
Eight hours, I'll teach. It feels like 80.
One, one thing that, that Buck and I had kind of talked about was, you know, an idea to partner up with the school and, and, you know, take a, take an SRO officer for the, for the summer months on a rotating, you know, when, when they're not in school, we could have an officer to help kind of back up and, and have another, you know, another person on the, on the force. I called Tommy Corcoran last week and just, you know, asked him, you know, what his thought about something like that was, and he said he would take it to Dr. Oberbo and see, he said it obviously could be something they could get in place for this school year, but they had wanted to have a fit SRO officer. So I called back, talked to Buck, and, you know, he may, he's, he's still uncertain for sure, but he may add some, add some monies into his request to kind of cover a portion of that benefits and salary for a third kind of officer for us, so that we could have an, an SRO that could be on duty during the summer months as well. I don't know, you know, I don't know if, I don't know if we have any interest in that.
I would love to see it.
And it would also give some alleviation to the county, right? Because that's a payroll that we would take on over the summer, because, and then we could have them staying here at the times when we have the most traffic and the most, I, I love the idea. I would, I would love for it to go to have a conversation with the county.
It's my understanding the school pays for the salary and we pay for the benefits, okay?
In the summertime, though?
Not in the summer, yeah. And then we'd have to...
Yeah, 100 SROs have the same option that teachers have to get paid on a nine-month pay scale or 12-month pay scale.
No, they're paid regular, but we're getting way into...
Yeah.
We're trailing hard.
Yeah.
But, so, letting know, we're gonna continue talking about it.
Yes, sir.
Time is short, if everyone can keep it short. Pertinent, Building and Planning Department, who do we have representing that group? You have me, Larry Allen. Any questions? Any... There was a combined June and July, and so, so we didn't have that done because of the department, we put them together.
Way, way different than last year, but...
A little over 60% drop, but that's because things were held up. This month is going to see a return revenue that's gonna be quite a bit higher. I've released two major commercial permits, about to let Whataburger go, they're real close to being wrapped up with all the questions that we had from them. So there's several things that are being released this month. Okay. Any issues, any things?
No, no, it's going pretty good, we're catching up. Now that we're catching up on all those, we have some other things that are coming to the department for development.
Okay, good. We'd like to hear about those in the future.
You will be by priority this next month.
All right. Thank you, Larry.
Awesome. We wait for that other code enforcement officer.
Well, yeah, let's, let's, you might as well stay there for a moment. Anything on animal control or...
We're one person short, so we fell off on some of the items that I've identified that we want to start in on code enforcement, and those will head toward our dangerous structure code, so we have the buildings that need to be addressed, and we'll be addressing that once we get the second person on and they're certified.
Good. Did that jump a post?
Yes, yes, we're already getting, we're already getting some applicants.
All right, thank you very much. I don't believe we have a convention of business, zero directive report.
It's added on your, on the data.
Well, any questions for me? No, it's pretty good. We don't have a roundtable meeting very shortly here. Awesome. Any comments, anything, suggestions you people would like to make? Councilmembers? No? All right. We have the all-important Stephanie's report.
Wait, wait, you skipped, you skipped Lang. That's the last.
Okay. Stacy, do you have a report you'd like to speak to, anything?
I did not get to all the written report because I was trying not to die last week. And I didn't figure y'all wanted whatever I was gonna type up in my things, but...
No, it's fine, I know you love stuff.
Pretty much same, same, same stuff, different day, so...
What's happening with all of this? Are we trying to find places for it?
So, we're waiting for them, that, that goes back in the janitor's closet, but we are waiting for them to finish up the top of it so we can put a new shelf in. That way we didn't have to move it out again to the...
Awesome.
So that's, they're, they're working on the women's bathroom right now, they'll do the men's bathroom next. Final step will be the carpet in here, and then I won't have to be a furniture mover anymore, I hope. anymore, I hope.
We're looking at maybe two, three weeks?
If that, I think it depends, so. Depends on if we break another, yeah, more water, type whatever, we're doing that one, so.
Okay.
Excellent, Stacy.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, city administrators' report.
Yes, I think I've said everything there, so any questions?
Councilmembers, any questions? And here she goes, all right. Does any council member, does anyone support or submit a report? Or you have anything you'd like to comment on your, quickly? Okay.
I went to the, the tech talk meeting and with, with Wayne, and we did hand over the information and got to talk to two people that are the most important people to know about the lack of a school zone on six, seven, on Big Ben Trail, and the fact that it has been approved for many, what was it, two thousand and?
Two thousand and nine.
Something.
That's two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one.
That it's been approved since then and it hasn't been put in, and they, I haven't heard back, Wayne and Larry were gonna be.
I'll give them a call.
The two to follow up on that, to make sure. Who dropped the ball? Where is it, where is our school zone on sixty seven?
I just wanna know the new speed limit, I told them.
It'll probably be thirty-five on sixty seven in that area. They're, they were actually talking about lowering the speed limit, they were talking about a light at two oh five, two oh five sixty seven, and lowering the speed limit from there through town because we need the school zone and everything. So they, they were having those discussions. That was just discussions that they were having, so it looked really good.
Awesome. Joe, I'd just like to offer any of you that aren't using Microsoft Teams yet, and you need to practice or play or you have questions, I'm learning, so if you ask me if I don't know, then it's good because that means I get to learn and find out. So as you guys are playing with teams, or if you haven't started playing, I would encourage you to do it, because after our last meeting, the very next day, I was able to sit down, look at all my things, boop, 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 and knock it out very easily. So I'm, I'm loving it, I appreciate it, thank you Stacy for helping us find it. I'm sure there's still a lot more for me to figure out how to use, but I'd like for us to get in the practice of, of using it, because I go and check and see who, what's still out there.
I think it's a good idea from a motivational standpoint, I use it in my profession, not in my play job. At this moment, we're going to suspend the regular meeting and go into executive session in accordance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings laws of Chapter D, Government Code, Gernix Texas Code annotated in accordance with Section 551 dot zero seven four Personnel Matters to glorify the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, dismissal of a public officer or employee to wit, city administrator, and the vacancy on city council due to resignation of council member Kelly Harris.
Stacy, can we ask, um, to come to our budget meeting?
Yeah, that's what, that's what they asked about in the last one, they kind of had a little bit, but it was, you know, so that they're more detailed for us to be asked.
Okay, welcome back, everyone.
I just didn't want for guys to feel like you were being left alone.
With no action taken on the executive session items, discussion concerning replacement of member Kelly Harris and of the city administrator, so no action was taken, no further conversation. Jim?